Okay, good evening and welcome to the September 12th, 2024 Board of Commissioners Working Session. Our first item of business is a motion to approve the minutes from the working session of August 8th, 2024, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes are approved. I'm going to exercise presiding officer's discretion to move public comment to after the presentation is made, so that residents have the chance to comment on what they've heard this evening. We have no unfinished business, and so I will turn this over to Township Manager Rich Van Freddy to provide an overview of the 2025 budget and his last one for the township.
Thank you, President Hecker. It is a privilege to stand in front of you for the eighth time, presenting a budget that does not raise the real estate taxes, did not raise taxes in '23, '24, and now again in '25. We are also not increasing the real estate transfer tax, the local services tax, the market deal and business privilege tax, or their earned income tax. We are also not increasing wastewater or refuse fees. And I'm going to show you a chart, which is the basis of the fund balance policy, which shows just how strong financial condition the township is in. With that, I want to simply say that the adoption calendar, as you know, is this evening in the working session, September 12th. We have a special meeting planned for October 1 for consideration of the proposed budget, and then another special meeting for November 7th for adoption of the annual budget. We've accelerated the timing this year so that there is plenty of time on the back end for any changes you may want to make to meet that December 31. But as you notice, there is, there is from the 13th tomorrow, when what is being presented and introduced this evening will be available until October 1st for any review before it is even put in front of you for action is proposed. And then should you act on it October 1st, there will be until November 7th, that additional time of more than 30 days for additional review of the proposed budget for action on November 7th for adoption for the fiscal year 2025 budget. As I mentioned, this budget holds a current total property tax rate at 5.922 mils. General fund revenues, fund equity, and expenditures are balanced. Wastewater and refuse fees remain unchanged, as well as all of the other tax rate that the township imposes. The total fiscal year 2025 budget that's in front of you this evening for all operating and capital funds is $81,107,116. The general fund totaling $49,925,345. All other operating funds total $21,462,853. The general fund permanent improvement capital fund totals $6,575,418. And I'm going to talk about that a little bit more very quickly here. And then, of course, the American Rescue Plan Act, funding in the amount of $12,132,654, bringing the total budget for fiscal year 2025 to $93,239,770. We will be getting into, as we go through this presentation this evening, and I'll outline who these speakers are and who's going to be speaking to what. We are going to get in greater detail about the American Rescue Plan Act, as well as other key improvements and changes in this budget from last year to this year, and I'll talk about that very shortly. What this plan achieves is maintaining a fund equity and an unrestricted fund balance reserve of three months of operating expenditures. As you know, the fund balance policy requires one month, but recommends two or three. And once again, we are at three months reserves, three months reserves, which is really the basis for capital spending and other types of spending. And we'll, I'll touch on that very briefly, because again, as I've mentioned, every year it is very important to pay attention to that and think about that into the future. This plan achieves maintaining that fund equity and unrestricted fund balance reserve of the three months of operating expenditures, increases township's cash reserve beyond previous projections, as earned income and business privilege taxes continue to grow. The general fund balance that's available after reserve meets generally accepted accounting principles. That's a standard that we have met each and every year. And we also exceed the two-month Government Finance Officers Association best practice and beyond the minimum of one month as prescribed in the fund balance policy. I mentioned the fund balance policy, and I talk about a strong financial condition, and I bring this up as the starting point, because it is critical to how this township functions. The next most important thing, probably the most important thing next to this, is the strategic plan. But when you look at this unassigned fund balance projected for 123124 of $24,965, and the policy that we have in place with the cash reserves for each month, and the basis of operating expenditures for the calculations of how you can spend revenues over expenses, this is where that $24,695, where the available for allocation after reserves is 12.2, and that gets divided among OPEB liability, capital fund, and fund equity available among that 12 million. So that's where this becomes important to think about over time, because all the money for the OPEB, aside from the tax that's levy, but for the capital fund in particular, is driven by revenues over expenses. So as revenues begin to drop and expenses keep rising, we have to have a vehicle by which to fund capital. We're looking at $6.7 million here from this fund, and then of course, operating, and you'll see later, it's actually $9 million, but that $6.7 million, if all things being equal, next year will be down to $2 million. So we are analyzing this, we are looking at this, and we are taking every opportunity to make sure that every time we spend a dollar and every time we look at revenues, and if, when you read my budget message, it'll be more clear, I am giving you the highlights and the overview, but when you read the budget message, this will be very clear to you. For example, the OPEB liability, we're able to set aside $4.2 million. That doesn't mean we will take that $4.2 million, it means we can. As you know, from your reading, the OPEB is at 112% funded, so we may not need to draw on that, so that will remain in that fund balance available to us. There's a reason that this unassigned fund balance is as high as it is. People have said to me, well, why wouldn't you be increasing the taxes as you go, a little bit at a time? And we have now for three years, and the last time we raised taxes was '21, when we went from 4.8 to 5.9 into the year '22. But it's a little difficult to recommend incremental increases, even if you look at the 1.2 that we are able, or the 1.040 that we're actually using of that 1.2 to balance this budget with fund equity, when you have $24 million sitting in the bank. It takes incredible conscience to recommend a tax increase when you have that much reserve. And we've worked very hard not to do anything to hurt that balance, but to increase that every year. And I want to pause for a moment, because as we analyze what we do and how we do, and if you remember, it'd be last year's budget, 2024, if you recall, Vince Lombardi talking about striving for perfection and maybe achieving excellence. Commissioner Weingrad, who has worked so hard in following in the footsteps of Representative, now Representative Sanchez, with this Abington-Jenkins Town Connection project. When that project was bid, it was, I believe, $2.2 million, Mr. Clark?
Correct.
We have expended in excess of $300,000. That's nearly $1.9 million that we have saved by having a construction services team, by spending capital dollars on the necessary equipment and putting the resources necessary for that construction services team. We have been continuously working to get better, training, and bringing more people along for the day when someone decides to retire. In 2025, a very important person is retiring. The person who followed, when we brought this concept, when I brought this concept to Ed Micheloe when I arrived, and we started working on this and doing this, and Tim Clark, who has experience in the construction services world, jumped right in and started building this team. And we have been doing project after project, stormwater work, stormwater project, working with Public Works, working hand in hand across all departments to build that reserve. By having projects that are worth $2.2 million being done by township, it forces for less than $400,000. And when you think of the number of projects that you approve every year for stormwater and the work that Mr. Clark does, it's pretty incredible. Then you put that with every department who works hard every day to make sure that they're efficient and effective in how they do it. And we are staffed and fully staffed everywhere we were, as far as it is delivering services that meet the ground, hit the ground. But I think it's important, with this budget, and I hope I'm going to go a little off course in what I normally do, because we would not be here, and we would not be in the position we're in with respect to a lot of the construction work that we do without the leadership of Mr. Clark. He is retiring in 2025. We'll see if it is actually January or February, and my guess is it'll be sometime in the first quarter. But I wanted to recognize him, because we talk about all the employees who do a fantastic job. You know, there's also someone in the police department you'll be learning about who is retiring, and that'll come at another time and ensure that individual will be recognized in an appropriate way in the next few months. But if we recognized everything, the police department, and the police officers, and Public Works, and refuse, and you're going to hear a few things tonight, if we recognized everything he did every month, there would be very little being done in terms of business in this room, because they would be taking up all the time that you have. Mr. Clark, if you would, please. Mr. Hecker, would you please? Tim, in recognition for your outstanding performance and dedication to the Township of Abington during your 34 years of service, I and the Board of Commissioners express our gratitude and thanks in order to certificate commendation to you for all of those years.
Thank you. It's been 34 years, five, six titles, and I was not ready to break in another manager, so thank you all. Thank you, Rich.
Thanks, Tim.
Thank you.
Tim has been training Timothy A. Clark, especially using the Abington-Jenkins Town Connection project as a training ground to take his place. So if you wonder why this evening for this commendation, it's actually twofold, because not only is the work that construction services team and Public Works, that they do help us be financially strong and solvent, we're also going to be restructuring next year to fill that vacancy of the Director of Engineering, and you'll see that in the budget as well. So we'll be looking to bring somebody else on, and that will certainly be the next manager's decision, who that individual is. So with that, I'm going to go through just a few more slides as we progress through this presentation and unveiling of this budget. The real estate tax distribution for 2025, as you can see, that Abington Township represents that very small piece of this peanut butter pie. We named this the Peanut Butter Pie of 12%. As you can see, 77% of that tax bill that you pay, there's two, but of the total tax, property taxes paid, 77% is the townships, 12%, I'm sorry, is the school districts, 12% is the townships, 10% is the county, and the community college represents 1%. This real estate tax distribution, just another way of showing it in yellow at that level of millage on the left axis, the 30, and then the tax in terms of dollars, 5250 to 6,000, you can see that yellow line is the school district. We are the blue line, and you can see how it flattened out beginning in 2022, that was the last year taxes were raised, and then it's been flat, and we had not increased in '23, '24, '25. And of course, then you also see where the county is, as well as the community college. What's also interesting about that, as you'll see as the presentation continues, each year the total real estate assessment of all of the property at township has been inching down as people continue to reassess their properties, and that decreases. So does the value of the mill, even if our collection rate remains the same, as that decreases, that reduces how much we take in. So even though it's slight, it's still a reduction, which makes us even pay more attention to how we spend money. I also mentioned how the next important thing is the strategic plan, and so much of what we do and everything that we do, we tie back to the strategic plan and the focus areas that this Board of Commissioners has established throughout that strategic planning process. This evening, you'll see each time someone approaches to present those items in this budget that are a little different or new, you're going, I'll just say this, there are several presenters, you're going to have Deputy Chief Porter, this budget includes adding two additional police officers. He'll be explaining why that becomes necessary. Lieutenant Joseph Bly and Lieutenant Drew Kent will be talking why we have money appropriated for principle and interest should we not receive a grant to construct a firing range, but talking about why a firing range is necessary, and since we've shut down the other, how it's impacted operations and cost to our budget. Elizabeth Fitzgerald, who everyone knows as the Library Director, will also be talking about the other hat she has taken on in a very part-time way as Special Assistant for Public Affairs. And I'll say this about Liz, I don't know if anyone's ever seen what's called Tiny Desk Concerts by PBS, or I'm sorry, NPR. And I said to her one time, hey, have you ever seen the Tiny Desk Concerts in the libraries on NPR? If you haven't seen them, they're fantastic. I said, wouldn't that be great if we could do something like that? The next thing you know, she's having a jazz concert at the library, and it's packed. And as so many things that she does, you give her a task or you give her an idea, she runs with it. One of the things that was in the strategic plan that was very clear in the mission, in the vision, was to make township an attractive destination for all to thrive. So we have been looking for various ways to make the township in traction, by doing things, using our vibrant public spaces. The strategic plan is driving what it is that we do and how it's funded. So Liz is going to talk about the initiative that I asked her to take on for next year, and I'm not going to say anything more, I'll leave that to her when she speaks to it. You'll also be hearing from Michael Jones, who, you know, we hear a lot of things about environmental protection, and if we go back to Ed Micheloe and how he transformed recycling in this township, and what a visionary he was, and how that is, that operation continues to meet that legacy and be a model for other municipalities. Stuart Weingrad, once again, Commissioner Weingrad, the gentleman reached out to us about salt and the impact salt has on our roadways, and when we salt, and how we remove salt from our trucks in the yard. And while we have a system in place to make sure that we're limiting our impact on the environment, we continuously try to strive for perfection and excellence. So he's going to be speaking about, and something that's in this budget, that, so that you understand, another initiative that we have, that, he was actually in front of the EAC last night talking with them. And I must say, when you look at the EAC, and especially the Shetree Commission, and you think about the vision that this board had and we had by integrating all these advisory boards and commissions into the operations of the township, and the time and the effort that those volunteers put in to help us be better in all that we do, here's another example of it, because people like Susan Myroff and Karen McGary Rosen and others, of course, khaki, but when you think about all of the work that has been done, we can't lose sight of the fact that we're a lead gold community, which is an amazing achievement. All of these things come about because of these budgets, this strategic vision, this strategic plan, and your support for moving the township in the right direction. It should never be lost. So after Mr. Jones, Ms. McElvein will speak to other initiatives that we have and costs that we have in here that relate and tie back to the strategic plan. She will also be touching on different pieces of the budget. And then, of course, Ms. Herman will be speaking to a lot of the numbers and getting into some detail, especially about the American Recovery Plan Act and why we're approaching it, the way we're approaching it, as well as other capital funding and other items. So with that, Deputy Chief Porter?
Thank you, Manager Man Freddy. President Hecker, good evening, members of the board. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to talk a little bit about what you're going to see on the budget that's presented to you, and what I'm here specifically addressing is the request for two additional police officers. It's been 30 years, more than 30 years, since we've been allocated and regulated to 92 police officers in Abington Township. And I think we can all agree that policing's changed quite a bit, 30 to 30 or more years since then, in many ways. For example, if you just want to think about our Community Policing Division, when we implemented that in the 1990s, in the early 90s, it looked nothing like it looks today. You know, we called them the Hugs and Mugs Team, and now we're trying to build that division up, because the community is the police department, and it's completely vitally essential to our operation. And that's just one example. Having 92 officers is great, but unfortunately, we're never at that level and haven't been ever since I've been here. And that's due partly to retirements, illnesses, injuries, time off, and gaps in our hiring process and things like that. So to move forward, oh, and I should also mention, you know, you might recall, a few years ago, we entered into that agreement with Holy Redeemer Hospital, where we provide them with an officer, and they provide the salary for that officer, and we never replaced that officer as well. So things have been changing the landscape over the years, and we're at where we are today. To illustrate the request for the two additional officers, I'll touch on a few points, and the first one is staffing shortages and how we operate a little bit behind the scenes here. Currently, the department, we face challenges to maintain the high level of service that we provide to the residents because of some of the staffing shortages, some of the issues that I mentioned earlier. And how we combat that is typically we reassign people from other divisions within the department, and doing so, most often, it's our Traffic Safety Division, the, one of the most busy group of individuals in the police department. I don't think it's a secret that one of the most consistent complaints that the police department receives, and the township, and probably perhaps yourselves, is the traffic complaints, as illustrated by one of our callers tonight. And when we remove somebody from the Traffic Safety Division, and this is just one example, and we put them on the road to cover mandatory staffing or manpower requirements, they're unable to do what they need to do in other areas of the township, whether it's speed surveys, enforcement, things like that. And again, that's just one example. And again, to take it to another level, is how we do police work today, and I mentioned it, it's changed over the years. Years ago, you were in and out of a call in three minutes dealing with somebody, and on to the next one. Well, that's not how it is today. Our residents deserve better, and we try to provide the best, and sometimes our calls are very involved, where we have to spend an extended period of time with people, helping them solve problems or addressing their concerns and needs. And that all backs up, that takes people off the street, officers off the street. To, when we talk about changing any type of staffing level, oftentimes the question comes up, what metrics are you using? And there are several metrics across the country that are used, and unfortunately, none of them are perfect, but we sat down and we looked at all of them, and we used a hybrid approach to some of these. And one of them is addressing crime. Some people base their staffing on addressing crime. So one of the crime issues I'd like to talk about, and just very briefly, is our juvenile crime. And this might be a pretty alarming statistic, because it's very alarming to us, and it's not particular to Abington. This is regional, this is national, is the juvenile crime rate. From 2021 till 2023, our juvenile arrests have increased 131%. 131% from '21 to '23. And I'm just talking about arrests. I'm not talking about where our officers encounter juveniles, maybe doing something they shouldn't have been doing, they drive them home, reprimand from the parents, things like that, and other situations. Those are just arrests. So that's a pretty alarming number. And I mention that because it's our hope at some point here in the near future that we can add a juvenile detective to that division to assist with the caseload that they're dealing with, among the other juvenile-related issues back there. Another factor as it relates to staffing is the ability to conduct proactive policing, and as one of the strategic issues up there is the excellent public services and doing that. Proactive policing involves strategies and initiatives that we can do to prevent crimes before they occur, to prevent and address traffic issues before they become a major issue, things like that. And by increasing our staffing, perhaps we can help alleviate some of the issues when we're reassigning people from that division. Those are just a couple of the different metrics. So some of the questions come, like, how do we compare to other departments around our area, other municipalities? And I have a little, a few numbers here. One of the metrics that commonly used, because it's easily gathered data, is how many police officers per 1,000 residents you have? How many police officers for every 1,000 residents? To give you an example, Lower Marion has 2.13 police officers for every 1,000. Upper Marion has 2.2. Abington, we have 1.5. And that's based upon the most recent 2020 census data. Interestingly enough, I go, the next question is, well, how busy are we when we compare to these other departments? Well, Montgomery County Department of Public Safety maintains an event list, essentially how busy police departments are, how many calls they are calling in with. And this may be shocking as well, but Lower Marion has 47% more officers than Abington, but we handle 4,000 more calls than them a year. They have 47% more police officers, and we handle 4,000 more calls. Upper Marion, to give an example, we handle 49,000 calls, according to the county. Upper Marion handles 17,000. We're busier than Norristown, 44,000, and we're busier than Pottstown. So I think the workload is there to support this as well. This is part of a strategic vision that we've discussed with the Township Manager and the Police Administration, and Chief Malloy, who's unfortunately out of town this week, if you're not aware, that we've discussed over the years to promote, build, getting to a point where we can continue to provide the professional services that the residents deserve. It's also helped us cut down on our overtime costs in the future, that's what we're hoping for. Over the past several years, especially since Chief Malloy took the helm, I know that we've worked very hard to create efficiencies with the realignment of different positions, both sworn and non-s sworn, and especially with our professional staff, they've really stepped up, they've taken on everything, the responsibilities and duties that they can assume to do the job effectively as well, supporting the police department. And these are just a few of the reasons. I can answer any questions, we can go in depth if you have any questions you'd like me to address particularly, I just didn't want to bore everybody with a bunch of statistics, but rather give a few examples this evening.
No, we appreciate it, Deputy Chief Porter. I mean, I think I speak on behalf of the board, to quote a line from Jerry Maguire, "You had me at hello."
Thank you. We're going to take, so we'll have Lieutenant Kent and Lieutenant Bly come up and speak about the need for the police range that we're discussing in the budget as well. Training is essential, I think you understand, to police work, and ongoing relative and recent training is extremely important. So we've asked them to speak on the issue of the police range.
Joe?
Thank you, Deputy Chief, thank you, Manager Man Freddy, thank you, Commissioners, for your time tonight. We're here to talk about requesting funds for a firearms training facility, a We're here to talk about requesting funds for a firearms training facility, a fully enclosed firearms training facility that's located on our public safety training campus. I'll give you a quick history of our range and some of the things that go along with that to kind of get, put it in context. Right now, the outdoor range is located at 2200 Florrie Lane, kind of in the back. And to the north is the Highway Department and to the northeast is the junior high school. And to the east is the high school and to the south is the football field. And to the southwest is Copper Beach and on and on and on, and you guys get the picture. When it was built in 1954, the only thing that was there was the school administration building. So certainly, the community's evolved and policing has evolved along with it. And for any of you who have constituents in the area, you guys hear about it anytime we're out there training. Last August, our range was shut down. We stopped firearms training there due to needed repairs and upgrades. So since August of 2023, we have not trained at that location. And in the meantime, have been trying to beg and borrow to get elsewhere to get our firearms training. I don't think I need to emphasize to anybody the importance of police training generally, but more than that, firearms training and how critical a task that is in our profession. It is perhaps the most important thing a police officer may have to do in their career. We hope never to have to do it, but it is a part of the job and we get that. Because of that, our firearms training program is pretty rigorous. We demand a lot of our officers and we should demand a lot of our officers. It's a complex skill. And as you folks know, with any motor skill, it takes a lot of practice and sustained practice over time to maintain that ability. The state only requires one training per year, but the Abington Police demand a whole lot more, which has been difficult to do in the last 12 months. Because of that, we've seen a slight atrophy in our skill set, and that's concerning to us. And for us, what's important is getting a training facility that we can access at any given time to train our officers to the best of their abilities so that they can go out there and perform the tasks that are asked of them. The important thing to note here is that when we, if we were to get a facility like this, it wouldn't just be about the physical task of firearms training. Our instructors aren't just score counters, they're coaches. Each one of those training events comes with a discussion about the ethics of force and whether or not we're going to use those things and how we use them. And the more training we have, the more confident our officers are. And the more confident they are, the more they can reduce their stress out there in the field. And the less stress they are in the field, the better they can, better decisions they can make in terms of using force and not using force. So one of the things we like to discuss here is that not only is it important to have the skill of deploying a firearm if necessary, it's even more important to know when not to use a firearm and the confidence that our officers have with their equipment. I've seen it in action where they know that they could use it and they don't because they're so confident in their ability, they, it kind of slows the game down for them. They're better able to read the field and make better decisions and bring peaceful resolutions. So this is a low-frequency but high liability thing that we have to think of when we're out there. It's a really important skill for our officers to develop. It's something that needs to be ongoing. The analogy I like to use is if I'm going to get on a flight, I don't want the last time my airline pilot has been behind the controls to be 11 months ago. And unfortunately, that's the condition we find ourselves in today. And unlike an airline pilot, who knows when the takeoff time is, we're there at the airport all the time and at any given moment, we could be called upon to put it in the air. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Lieutenant Kent to get into the details of the request, and I'm going to remain up here in case there's any questions.
Just one second before you do. Ms. Cabal, you're interrupting the meeting.
Good evening, Mr. Manfredi, commissioners. So I'm the chief range officer of the department. Kind of my job is setting up the training every year, the firearms training, weapons maintenance and stuff like that. So this is the first year I've ever had to do this without our own range. And I've been, there's a couple of options out there that we've tried. And it's basically, I've been calling jurisdictions nearby us, asking them to use their range. But what a lot of people, a lot of people are helpful until I make the phone call. A lot of these agencies only have 30, 20 police officers. When I call them and I say I need to qualify 92 officers, you know, they're facing some of the same issues we did with our outdoor range as far as the noise pollution and the public really not liking it. So it's difficult for them to allow us to use their facilities because it could get them shut down for some of the, kind of the same reasons. So one of the other things we've looked at is going up to the county range, but that's used by local, state, and federal agencies. The problems we've run into with the county range is you have to submit your days this year for next year, which dates you'd like. And because they, so many agencies that don't have their own ranges use their facilities, they only give us a few days. Most agencies, again, we're the second largest department in the county, so most agencies do not have 92 officers that they're trying to qualify. So what we found is it's not helpful. On top of that, they have some maintenance issues up there, so they've actually scheduled some trainings and had to cancel them because the range was shut down. So that's one of the main hurdles we have is finding a location to keep up with our traditional training. So since I've taken over, every year, our officers are firing about seven times. So that's four times with their handguns, two times with patrol rifles, and one time with a shotgun. And like Lieutenant Bly said, the state only mandates you shoot once. That's not how we've ever operated. We've always been very active with our firearms training because we know it leads to better results. We looked at our numbers in our officer-involved shootings, and Abington's performance is significantly better, the national, better than the national average. So we believe the proof is in the pudding. The way we have trained, our performance when these unfortunate issues take place, it adds up. So right now, one of the options that we're exploring was maybe attaching a range to our current public safety training annex. That's the only thing we've really looked into. Obviously, we have some funds if this is approved, where we could do a feasibility study and determine whether that's the best option or not. If we were to move to an indoor range, there's a lot of options we have there as far as training 24/7. The weather really doesn't interfere and obviously, it takes down the noise pollution that an outdoor range causes. So that's all I really had as the chief range officer. If you have any other questions for me, I can hang around as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Lieutenant. Lieutenant Kent.
Yes, sir.
Can you please speak to the costs involved in not having a range?
Yes, absolutely. So when I speak to using other jurisdictions or going to the county range, we have to actually pay our officers overtime. They're going to have to come in on their off-duty days and train on those days. So a lot of that folds into childcare, whether they can make it or not. So if this person can't make it, it's not like it was in the past where when they're working day work, I can have two trainers up at our own range and guys when they're working, guys and girls when they're working the street can just go over there, qualify, do the training, and go right back to the street. Oftentimes, you know, the county range is almost an hour away with traffic, so we can't just rotate officers in and out. So what we have been doing is paying overtime to have them come in on their days off so we have a captive audience and we can make sure all the training is complete.
We can do them now. I just want, I know you have a clip, so yeah.
I have questions on both presentations. So on the range, I heard you say feasibility study and also construction, so what is he asked for this year?
What was the question?
Feasibility study or construction or both?
Oh, for the, I guess for the money. Are you asking for what the money, the funds we were requesting were for?
Yeah, I first thought you were asking for money to build and then I heard money for a feasibility study, so what are we being asked for this year?
Yeah, so if this is approved, there should be funds included in there to conduct a feasibility study.
Prior to construction?
Prior to construction, we would need that, but Manager Manfredi.
The feasibility study is budgeted for this year. We budgeted money for the feasibility study. The estimates are anywhere from 5,000 to 15,000. What's in this, the goal is, and I know Chief Malloy has been speaking to Congresswoman Dean and others, or looking for either RACP money for that $3 million at our existing facility. The feasibility study would look at, is an addition most feasible? Is a second floor most feasible? What's going to work? So we are prepared, but we didn't want to spend the money on a feasibility study if we didn't get a sense that the commissioners were willing to support, at least in principle and interest in this budget, the money for the range.
Okay.
So if it's, if there's an inclination to do that, then we would move on that quickly to have that feasibility study done.
Okay. So potentially, we're looking at another year before we're actually building a facility?
Yes, sir. Yeah, it's going to take some while from, it'll take a little while from all the contacts that we've reached out to. There have been some departments around us that have done this recently, but it's, it doesn't seem to be a very heavy lift. And I think Manager Manfredi's vision on how we were to approach this with the feasibility study first, as long as the board's willing to move forward.
Okay. And do we have a plan for training for this coming year without a facility?
We do, and I don't want to speak for Lieutenant Kent, but right now, we're using a couple surrounding agencies, and some are picking up a part of a day, another day. So they're being very understanding of our situation, which we much appreciate. One thing that wasn't mentioned is the county range is very unreliable. They've built on a swamp up there, in case you weren't aware, and the building is actually shifting and the floor is coming apart. So they've canceled a third of our days already. What we scheduled back in November, they've already canceled a third of our training days this year ahead of time. So these other municipalities are jumping in and we're just, it's taking much longer and it's much less, not much less as, it's much less both in what we're teaching and the frequency of what's being taught.
Okay. And then on the staffing?
Yes, sir.
So you're proposing to go from 92 to 94?
Yes, sir.
All right. But I also do say that you haven't been able to, like, fill the full 92 complements. So where are we today?
Right now, we are sitting at 80, depending on, right now, we're about five, we're down five officers right now. We have a projected, we're projecting needing 10 officers right now, possibly next year.
Okay. So I'm not opposed to increasing complement, but I just scratched my head when you asked me to increase the complement, but you're having trouble filling the slots already provided.
It's not, it's not a problem with filling the slots that are provided. We've had people leave unexpectedly.
Okay.
Right now. That's the, that's the problem there. And to that point, we've just, Lieutenant Kent runs our oral interview board. We just completed our interviews yesterday. And I think we have a pretty, as we always do, I think we have a pretty good solid list of candidates. We're ready to get the list certified and several, at least 20 or more, I believe. I didn't see the final list, but we're ready to start moving forward with backgrounds to present something to the board for personnel to hire, moving forward with that.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Schreiber.
We were actually at the training center today, and there was drilling going on. Now I'm wondering if it was because they're, so I'm wondering if there's such a need of this. If we build something, will other areas want to use it and how does that work? You know, if we make a state-of-the-art kind of thing, and is it something we can charge for too? Or I don't know if you're, if they're charging us or how that's working.
Thank you, that's a great question. And they are not charging us right now, but you and I think very alike, yes, we would very much like to do that and offset any maintenance costs that may come up, changing filters, things like that. That would be our hope. But that would all be done through most likely MOUs. Look at the solicitor, Manager Manfredi, that's typically what that's done. There are other municipalities not in this area that do that exact same thing. One entity owns it and they charge a minor fee for the other entities to come in. Also, with an indoor range, we try to recover some costs, the lead, the brass, things like that. We try to sell all that back to put that back into the, to the budget, anything that we can to recycle and recoup that, things that aren't that efficient to do right now with outdoor ranges.
Thank you. All right, Commissioner Brown.
Thank you. Can you guys speak to some of the barriers of using maybe some private-owned ranges that are in the area and why those are not available?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Brown. We looked into that, and matter of fact, we were trying to do it. The only range around here that would really accommodate us to some extent would cost us about $1,000 a day right now. And we still can't complete everything that we would like to do there. We're limited in what they let you do. It's a very static, very standforward, not really what even the state requires us to do. We can get it done if we had to, but the one range we looked into, and they were, they were more than willing to take our money, but it was just, it seemed cost prohibitive at the time and not really feasible to do some of that. What people don't understand, sometimes this range training oftentimes doesn't involve live-fire shooting, but we're handling live weapons. And to have, you need a safe facility to handle a live weapon in order to do some of the movements and the tactics that are needed, even if we aren't shooting. So a lot of these facilities, they don't do that. They pay per target and everything's straight.
Commissioner Spiegelman has his hand up.
Thank you, thank you very much, President Hecker. I just want to say thank you very much, Deputy Chief and lieutenants, for your presentation. As I think folks know, the public safety training facility and the old outdoor range are located in Ward 11. So I know very well that while the anxiety shared by the, you know, by the noise and other activities at the old outdoor range were certainly, were shared throughout school district, students and parents because of the proximity of the middle school and the senior high, then I heard a great deal over the course of many years from the neighbors of Ward 11 about their significant concerns about having, you know, a facility that they understood to be very important in that close proximity to their homes. So I applaud your efforts and certainly you can count on my support as you, as you move forward. I really love to keep abreast of your progress. So thank you very much for all of your work on this.
Thank you. Mr. Weinberg.
Can I ask?
Of course. I just want to make sure we keep.
So in terms of this year's budget, so as I understand, the feasibility study was budgeted for 2024. That has not been done yet.
Not yet, no, sir.
For 2025, you're asking $3 million to be allocated.
The, to cover the payment and interest on a $3 million is what we do?
Yeah, it's not $3 million, it's, it would be the interest on the loan that would be taken out.
The interest on the loan.
Yes. And to be clear, we're really searching, trying hard and to go to, to address Commissioner Schreiber's comment about a multi-jurisdictional range. The individuals, Mr. Sanchez and everybody else that we've been talking to are very interested if we can do something like that. Apparently, grant money may be easier to come by if we are able to open a range up to other jurisdictions. So if we do get grants, it would be nice not to have to have that payment.
But we're asking for a $3 million loan in this, in this budget?
The interest and principal payments on a $3 million loan.
But we don't have the loan yet, though.
That is correct. The idea is to continue to seek the $3 million grant first. If all fails and Representative Sanchez, Congresswoman Dean, or any of our other sources, whether it's RACP or any other grant funding sources, if they fail, in order to get to where we are, we're budgeting principal interest for a $3 million loan.
And then ultimately, that would be spent in 2026? You know, for construction?
It depends on what the design is. Once the feasibility study determines whether it's more cost-effective to add on to the back of the building or to go up, out, tear down, and rebuild, that feasibility study will dictate, you know, what comes next, how much this is going to cost, and whether this is going to take six months or 18 months.
Thank you. Commissioner DePlacido.
Just a quick question. Is our construction services able to build this?
Not in its entirety.
No?
We need trades.
Other comments or questions? Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, President Hecker.
Appreciate your time. I think next on is Liz Fitzgerald. Good evening.
Thank you so much for having me here today. And I would like to thank Ms. Mennett or anybody who can use this. So the reason that I invited you is just to talk a little bit more about why the role as Special Assistant for Public Affairs, some of the work that I have been doing, and the work that I will be doing, we need to learn. Oh, thank you. So the primary focus of what the Special Assistant for Public Affairs role is, is around meeting the strategic plan's vision to make the township an attractive destination, which Mr. Manfredi mentioned earlier. And it's going to be working towards the, achieving the goals and the focus areas around vibrant public spaces, excellent public services, and inclusive community. One of the focuses is going to be on communications. And I have been and will continue to work with the communications team and the media team on special projects. And that looks like social media campaigns and creating video content for the township's HD public access channel. What we're doing is collaborating with other departments on critical messages that they need to get out to the residents. As an example, I have been working, we've been working with waste management on the critical message that people need to stop putting trash in their paper and cardboard recycling.
Thumbs up.
That is my message. That is their message. People have been putting interesting things into paper and cardboard recycling. I took a trip down and dug through some of the items, and my message right now is cut it out. the items. And my message right now is cut it out. There's another additional focus on this idea of Abington Township being a destination for fun and exciting events. And Mr. Manfredi and I have a shared vision around libraries. I am primarily the library director. And in our conversations, we've really talked about this shared vision. And we both know, and I know that you all know, that libraries are important as places that have resources, that have books, public computers, that have big, fun, exciting events that happen. But our libraries are not only limited by the four walls that contain our books, our staff, our resources. We have a role beyond the buildings themselves. Just to brag a little bit about the libraries, though I am here to talk about public affairs, in 2023, the library staff attended over a hundred outreach events going out into the community. Things like celebrations at schools, senior fairs, community events like Unity Day, the Roslyn Carr Show, the Arts League Kite Festival, and that is just a very small number of the things that the folks have done. And we've had standout events regularly. I was just at the library earlier and we had Ballet X come and do a performance on the main floor of the Abington Free Library. And it was amazing. I'm sorry that you all couldn't be there for it. But we are doing, as Mr. Manfredi mentioned, quarterly concerts at the library. We have hosted New York Times bestselling authors, bringing hundreds of people together for library events. And so what Rich and I have seen is an opportunity, a real opportunity to not only have these wonderful community events as library programs, but to expand it and to, to offer something to the community that are Abington events, that create Abington Township this destination. And we are building on and expanding on some of the successes that we've had in the past. And just one example, last summer, the library participated in the Summer Meals Program at Crestmont Park. And so this year, I worked with Community Development, with Parks and Recreation, to launch the library pop-ups in the park. And what that was is that we went over the course of seven weeks to several different parks around the township. And the library had STEM and literacy activities. We signed up folks for library cards and got kids registered for summer reading. Community Development gave away four hundred and seventy free lunches to Abington children. We engaged with hundreds of people during these events. And what this was an opportunity for was really to highlight our beautiful parks and to show that they are spaces where we can have large community events, where we can draw people out. And speaking of drawing people out to large community events at parks, on October 5th, we're going to be having the Fall Festival at Crestmont Park. And this has been a collaboration with all of the township departments. In particular, I want to shout out my colleague Jessica Tholey, Director of Parks and Recreation, without whom we wouldn't be able to do this. But on October 5th, at the Fall Festival, all of the township departments are collaborating. We're doing a Touch a Truck Trunk or Treat. So we're having all the township, not all of the township trucks, but many township trucks come out. And it's been wonderful to see how the guys have been really excited about decorating their trucks and getting dressed up in costumes to give candy out to kids. And we are going to have a live band at this event. We're having food trucks, activities for all ages, bounce houses. I'm sorry that I don't have a hat like the gentleman earlier did, but we are doing a scarecrow decorating event. And we'll be putting the finished scarecrows around the township, at parks, at the libraries, hopefully as a part of his event as well. And all of this on October 5th at Fall Festival is a precursor for, and a dry run for Abington Day for 2025. And that's something that Mr. Manfredi and I have really been discussing about creating this big event, a big central event to bring people together, to bring people to Abington. And so a bit of our vision for Abington Day next year, it's all going to be on one day, and we're going to have events at five different parks throughout the township. We're working on a 5K at Roslyn Park. We are, want to have a family event at Crestmont Park, a Fall Festival at Roychester Park, a pickleball tournament at Pembrym Park, and a parent-child golf tournament at Avellthorpe Park. And all of these events will be staggered throughout the day so that if you want to start your day with a 5K race and then end up at the Fall Festival at Roychester and head over to win the golf tournament, you can do all of those things all in one day. And this has really been just a pleasure working on this and trying to, and brainstorming and working with my colleagues throughout the different departments in the township to figure out how we can really engage the community, how we can bring people together. And I look forward to working with all of you on that task.
Likewise. Thank you. Any questions or comments?
Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll get you a hat.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to add to that. If you recall, very last few months, the board approved the new Comcast agreement. In that Comcast agreement, and we've talked about this in the past, and I know Ms. McElveen has worked very hard with me on this agreement, to get additional dollars so that Ms. Heckeluski, who is our Communications Manager, whose background is video and production, so she will be behind the scenes and Liz will be in front of the cameras. We continue to go all these different places. But it's important to note that one of the things that was a sticking point in getting that agreement done was having Comcast agree to give us an HD feed so that our TV channel can actually have content. It's the chicken or the egg. We need to drive production and programs to be able to have that feed as an HD feed. So the more we do, the more we produce, the more we are out there, the more content we have, the more we communicate with the public, the faster we'll have that HD feed and the, and the more robust that channel will be. So all of this fits together. That all fits to the outreach and, and just making Abington understood to what a premier community that it is.
Thank you.
I'm going back to Ballet X, which I was not invited to, and I'm very sad about that. But things like that are, are they not more widely, is it because we don't have space that there weren't, I was not invited because of space now?
No, I am, I am sorry that I didn't get an invitation to you.
I mean, why, it's the, the community not, was that not a community event? Or, and I missed it, or?
So it's a, it's a library, it was a library event. It's part of a quarterly series of arts programming at the library.
I just missed it on the, on your list.
Yeah, it was in our, our newsletter and on the website. But clearly, we need to do a better job of promoting these things.
And I always look at your stuff too, but I just missed that one. But I, I didn't know if it's because there's really no, like auditorium space.
No, Commissioner Schreiber, there is no auditorium space, but we would make good use of one were we to have access to a space, perhaps in a library one day.
Nice pitch.
Thank you.
Well, nicely done.
Thank you.
All right. Next up is Mike Jones. Good evening, Mike.
Good evening. I'm President Hecker. Commissioner, if you'd have my permission to allow me to present. Thank you for allowing me to present on an exciting new project that we hopefully can get funded for this year. For well over a year, we've been asking or answering questions about how our salting operation can have less impact on the community and on the environment. Through operations, plowing at lesser amounts, putting less salt down on the streets, we've managed to, to put less salt down than normal. But one of the things that came up, and that's through the EAC, has a water quality, a retired water quality guy that's been working very closely with us, monitoring the water that's leaving our facility, going down through Bitterwood Park. And, and he found that the, the salt contents, for lack of a better word, were higher there than in other areas of the township. So we started looking at our operation there. Yes, all the bulk salt gets pushed into our salt dome and is out of the weather. But there's always residual on, on the parking lot. When we have to clean out our trucks and put that salt on the ground, there's always residual. So what we've put in the budget and what we're excited about is a fully enclosed truck wash, which the truck will pull in, it's got jets underneath, it's got jets on the side, it's recycling the water, and it's collecting the water, and there's a polymer involved that, that adheres to the salt. It settles to the bottom of the tank, and when the tank has enough sediment in it, you clean out the tank. It should eliminate any salt leaving our facility and going down into this storm drain. It's not going to eliminate the salt that's on the, on the road and getting into storm drains, but we're putting less down. We have found that that is still the most economical way to keep the public safe, is the rock salt over some of the other products that are out there. And we have the equipment to put the rock salt down as opposed to some of the other, other stuff. So what you see on the, on the screen is the truck being washed, and that would be fully enclosed inside of a building. And then you see the separator and the tank, and on the one side, you see a chute coming off, which would be an auger that would bring the sediment from the bottom out and into a, you know, into a truck or, or one of our front-end loaders. So by doing this, in year two, we would put a, we would hope to put a grate system in around our salt dome, where we load our trucks, where we accept our, our deliveries. That water, that rain runoff would then be piped into the same separator. And we would not have any, any of our salt residual leaving the site. So something that we're excited about, something the EAC was excited to hear, that we are taking measures into, to lessen our impact on the community and the environment.
And where will, where will this be located?
This will be located in our Public Works facility, right past our truck equipment shed that you drive around. For anybody that comes to the recycling events, there's a big shed that has all our heavy equipment on it, would be located at the end of one, of, of that structure there.
Excellent. Commissioner DePlacido.
Just a quick question. Does PennDOT use something like this? And another question, would there be any grant money available from them if we were to do something like this?
Something to look into. We do receive a lot of grant money for the equipment that is being, that's going to be washed, that's going to go through the truck wash. But as far as PennDOT uses, PennDOT structures are a lot newer than our Public Works facility. To give an example, Springfield has a brand-new Public Works facility. This was a requirement in, in building a new, new facility. We're just adding it to a, to an old, old facility. So I can, I can check on grant, grant possibilities. But as far as DEP grants go, it's mostly for equipment that we have found. And one more advantage to this is the, the life of the truck. Getting all that salt off from the undercarriage will extend the life of the trucks. And that's the, the biggest thing in replacement is the corrosion to the, to the trucks, to the bodies and to the frames.
Just one more question. Can I run my car through there?
You beat me to it.
I want to tie a few.
My eyes will be closed to whatever you wish.
Commissioner Weinberg.
Thank you. Is, is Public Works seeking any additional employees over what they have now, 2024?
We are not.
All right. How many, how many employees does Public Works have now, if you?
We have seventy and then, and five more mechanics. So we have seventy-five working out of that facility. And that's Refuge, Highway Department, Construction Services, Vehicle Maintenance.
Okay. So, and seventy-five is what's being budgeted for 2025?
Yes. I don't know if that's an exact number, but it's very close to that number.
Thank you.
The complement chart you'll see in the budget for every department.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
If I could, I mean, it's, it's a great question because the way the departments work together, Public Works, Parks, the Construction Services Team, Property Maintenance, they all help and work together. If there's a need, for example, on the Abington-Jankin Town Connection Project, we'll pull masons in from Public Works to join the Construction Services Team. If they're working on, you know, cleanup on, on the medians in Old York, on Old York, it'd be Parks as well as Public Works employees. So they all work as one unit. So it's really that total number when you look at that complement chart for, for the various departments.
Thank you. Call forward Ashley McElveen, Assistant Township Manager. Good evening, Ashley.
Thank you for having me. I will keep it brief. As Mr. Manfredi's.
Am I that obvious?
Yeah, right. I have this down to three minutes, I promise. As Mr. Manfredi spoke to the strategic plan and its focus areas serve as the basis for any budget requests. So tonight, I'm going to talk to you about three budget requests, IT, GIS, and an update to the township website that I believe align with the focus areas of fiscal sustainability, inclusive community, excellent public services, and sustainable infrastructure. So it will come as no surprise that IT, information technology has seen increased prominence in the last few years. Recently, we have seen serious cyber attacks on surrounding townships and counties. Federal agencies have put down mandates and requirements of our systems in order to access and share information that we must comply with. And we've seen regular attempts by bad actors to infiltrate our systems. And oftentimes, you'll see those email spams and spoofs that are going out. This year, we've engaged consultants to do internal and external penetration tests, as well as a network assessment, so that we would be able to better understand our vulnerabilities, our, our infrastructure and opportunities to increase our safety and improve our network. Nathan Bassman and Ernie House have worked to remediate any of the immediate issues that we can address. And last month or the month before that, I believe we brought before you additional services that we said we need to do right now. But those recommendations of those assessments go beyond that. And we know that we need additional financial resources and expertise to really make sure that our system that we have today is, is secure. So what we're looking for in this budget request is additional funds to engage consultants to assist with the implementation of the recommendations, as well as manage services for oversight and security that will help mitigate our risk and ensure that we have systems in place to prevent that infiltration, or if it does happen, identify and remediate before it becomes a much larger issue or, you know, a four-million-dollar ransom, what have you. Additionally, any network upgrades that we make, because we are multi-site, should provide operational improvements amongst the various departments and hopefully increase efficiencies. GIS, our Geographic Information System, continues to be an important tool internally for asset management, evaluation, and project management, and externally for sharing and collecting information with the public. This, in this budget, we're looking to build on our current program by hiring a consultant to help us in refining some of our existing GIS services. So for example, with the Citizen Service Request Tool, we're looking to act on some of the feedback that's provided to us by users, as well as help to expand our existing system. So, so that we can better understand our assets, that we can have more future planning, and overall improvements to our service. This work will help us achieve the goals outlined in a lot of the department narratives, which I encourage everybody at home to review. I mean, it really gets in the detail of what we're doing and our goals, and this will help us accomplish that, as well as increase engagement with the public. And then finally, this budget includes a request for funding for the redesign of the township website. That honestly feels like deja vu, that I was just before you talking about this, but that was six years ago, which is
Wow.
hard to believe, or coming up on six years. And so with this redesign, we're really hoping to increase the functionality of our search function. That's been limited with our existing vendor and a frustration for us internally. We're also hoping to reduce redundancies between department webpages and websites. And we're looking to build out that one-stop shop that we've been striving to get to. So as many of you know, we now accept some online permits. We'll continue to look to build those out. Our large item pickup, you can schedule your pickups online. And we're going to look for ways that we can continue to provide those services online, make them more accessible, as well as make information more readily available. So those are the three requests that are included in this year's budget that I'm hoping you'll consider. And then with that, we will shift back to the preliminary proposed budget.
Any questions on this before we shift back to the preliminary budget? Okay.
All right.
Let's proceed.
All right. Well, we're going to start with the typical township property tax. A property owner will pay one dollar in property tax for every one thousand of taxable appraised value of the property. So therefore, an example is if the county assessed a value of an Abington Township owner's, owner's property. of an Abington Township owner's property, we're set at $150,000. Then for one mil of taxes would equal $150. So at the proposed township tax rate of 5.822, the township taxpayer would then pay $888.27 in township property taxes. So we keep hearing about mil, which the 5.922 that we're looking to sustain into 2025. So what does that represent? This graphic demonstrates the value of one mil. So the assessed value for all township properties is $3,427,555,407. As Mr. Manfredi spoke to earlier, that is a decrease in 2024, which is depicted in that variance. In order to understand then, what is the value of a mil, we would divide that by 1,000. So for each mil, we anticipate collecting roughly $3,427,555, excuse me. And we anticipate a collection rate of approximately 98%. So again, on the right-hand side, you're seeing that that's been a slight decrease in what we're anticipating collecting because of that decreased assessment. Wrong computer. And so when we think of the township as a whole, we've started now with the homeowner. When we look at the entire township, what this graphic demonstrates is the levy. So of that 5.922 mileage rate, we now see that broken out by the levies, both general levies and special levies. And we see a comparison between 2024 and 2025 and the expected tax revenue. So on the right-hand side, you'll see again what that means in real dollars for that decreased assessment across the township and our anticipated property tax revenue. And so with that, I'd like to introduce Director of Finance, Jeanette Herman, to continue the presentation.
Thank you, Ashley.
Thank you, Ashley. Good evening.
Good evening, Jeanette.
I would like to reiterate something Ashley said. As you know, I'm going to get into the weeds with some of the numbers. And I know they're not everybody's favorite topic. And I will try to make it quick, I promise. But those department narratives, as well as the speakers tonight, really do demonstrate the detail of what everyone is doing with their departments and the funds that they are allotted through the budget process. So for those of you who don't like numbers, jump into the narratives and you'll find a lot of great information. That being said, we'll start off looking at the comparison of 2024 to 2025 in the various funds. I'm going to keep it limited. You'll see that the budget for general fund is increasing $2.5 million over 2024. This is directly correlating to personnel costs as it often does each and every year. You'll see that on a further slide as well. Of importance on this slide, which the board and other staff members will get into at a later meeting, is the American Rescue Plan Act. So just as a brief overview of what is able to occur. The American Rescue Plan Act allows the recipients to elect a standard allowance, is their words, elect a standard allowance of $10 million under their revenue loss provision. What you can then do for the township is our plan, is to reduce our general fund expenses by those $10 million by reallocating them from the ARPA fund and reducing our salary costs that are planned. In place of that, we are hoping to use that freed up money towards Parks infrastructure investments and the Economic Development Corp. As I said, this could be discussed in great detail at further meetings. We just wanted to provide some language that was in the American Rescue Plan Act. There is a lot of information out there on the website for the U.S. Department of Treasury. Some of the more recent language was from their FAQ. I should mention, it's 107 pages long. FAQs are usually much shorter. Some of the language is written here. That is basically what I have just said to you about the standard allowance and the $10 million, how it can be used for payroll for government employees. And then, of course, they encourage recipients to use those funds, those freed up funds, for investments that serve the needs of the communities. In addition, one of the biggest points that will come up at that future meeting will be the definition of obligation and what the board and the township must do, both for the revenue loss provision and the $2 million that we still have above the $10 million that we are able to make decisions on and obligate to other future projects. Those funds have to be obligated through inter-agency agreements, there's a variety of forms of those, by 1231-2024. So the board, as I said, will be discussing that at a later time. Just wanted to provide the language here that you could see from the Department of Treasury as this presentation is in the online budget book. I should mention the complement will also be in the online budget book, but it is not in this presentation. I just wanted to mention that. In further review of the general fund specifically in this slide, I just wanted to point out, we categorize by the DCD chart of accounts, which is what this is reflecting. But of note is what Township Manager Manfredi mentioned earlier, is that in order to have a balanced budget of revenue and expenditures in the general fund, we are seeking to use anticipated fund balance of a little over $1 million. We, under the fund balance policy, have 1.2 million that we can use. And we are hoping, or we need to use $1 million in order to balance the budget. Again, reiterating what Manager Manfredi said earlier, you can see that our revenues and expenses over the past 10 years, and it's gone up and it's gone down. And in more recent years, the revenues have steadily increased. A lot of this is because the earned income tax reset as everybody got back to work after the pandemic. Unemployment went down, I'm sure you've heard that in the news. So that's great. Our business taxes reset and came back up and even increased a little bit as everybody started going out and spending again. Of course, costs have gone up with inflation. Some of those business taxes are based on your grocery receipts. So if you're receiving more because you're charging more, we're going to collect a little bit more money. That being said, our expenses, as I mentioned, are still outgrowing our revenues. And this will need to be addressed as we keep going forward. So how are your property tax and other dollars spent? That's always the question everyone wants to know. So this chart just reflects which funds the various fees and taxes are attributed to. Of more importance or more understanding is the major cost centers by function or by department, if you will. So you will see here that some of our largest public service areas of the township, the police department, the culture and rec department, the library, the public works, they are our largest units and they are relying heavily on our tax revenues that we collect throughout the year. In fact, they're using up to 75% of the revenues generated by the general fund collections. In addition to that, you'll see sewer operations and also refuse. Those two depend on the fees that are collected that folks will see on their tax bill that they receive in February. Again, this is just supporting information regarding the taxes, earned income tax, the Act 511 taxes and whatnot, and representing how much of this makes up of the general fund of each category. And you can see property taxes at 35%, earned income tax at 22%, and the other taxes at 20.9%. And then there's all the rest, which make up roughly 30% of the general fund receipts. Won't read all of these to you, but I just wanted to note that earned income tax revenues from '23 to '24, well, we found at the end of '23 that they had increased greatly. And we spoke with Burckheimer, the earned income tax collector, and we were able to increase our 2024 budget by 1.25 million. However, going forward, it's only anticipated that we'll go back to modest increases. And in fact, for 2025, only $250,000 more dollars are estimated to be collected for earned income tax. So we won't enjoy another million dollar increase, unfortunately. That being said, we did see an increase in interest earnings. And we reset those budgets, that interest earnings are partially due to market valuations. It's also due to our banking agreement that we moved into last year and early this year. As we move down into the expenses, you can further see here how we spend our money. Of course, because we're providing excellent public service and all of the other items that are in the strategic plan, of course, we have to have personnel. So personnel has always made up the largest portion of our budget. Going forward into 2025, personnel costs are at 67% of the total costs that the township is expecting. Again, some backup detail here, I won't read them all, but you can see where those personnel costs are that are both increased that you saw in the first chart for the general fund and the chart just above in the personnel costs. I should note gasoline expense, which is often a topic in each year's budget, has stabilized for the moment. Not being sure fully where the market will go, so hopefully there won't be any unexpected items. We haven't been informed that there should be any. We are under an agreement for gasoline expenses. But we do, there is a portion of that agreement that varies. And that piece sometimes increases enough that our budget may go over budget as some of you have seen in the past. We are not anticipating that in 2025. Just reiterating what Manager Manfredi said, of course, refuse fees and sewer fees are not being increased for 2025. These fees, though, do support each of their budgets at a rate of 85%, the fees directly. There are other funds that they collect, interest and grants and other things. But the fees alone account for 85% of the amount of expenditures that they budget each year. They are heavily reliant on those fees. Now, jumping out of general fund and the other funds, we're going to jump into permanent improvement. So at the beginning of this year, as you can see at the top of this chart here, we had $2.8 million available. That's the cash and investment funds that are available in the permanent improvement fund balance. We collect a little interest for what is out there through our banking agreement. We had budgeted a little over $6 million for expenditures in 2024, but we're expecting to spend 5.3 of that. We will then need the transfer from fund balance, as we saw in the fund balance policy presented for 2024, will need $5 million of that estimated in order to cover the costs that we incurred this year and to balance out those numbers. For 2025, we are anticipating $6.57 million in capital expenditures. And our transfer from fund balance, as you saw in the earlier slide, we are allowed to transfer $6.7 million. However, that leaves us back at our $2.8 million. And that number is not changing. We have become reliant on our fund balance policy for capital expenditures. And we will need to address that as we go forward, looking into '26, '27, and so on. And last but not least, we just show on this page, there was a whole section in the online budget book, but on this page, we show a listing of all capital projects for all departments and all funds, not just the permanent improvement fund. And of course, this is a clickable chart. Folks can drill down into it. And last but not least, any questions arise, anything that you need to know or if the residents need to know, they are welcome to email my office at onlinebudgetbook@abbingtonpa.gov. We are happy to help them sort through the budget book or answer any questions that arise. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeanette. That was excellent. Question for you and/or the manager. I mean, just to kind of put this in context. You mentioned, Rich, that the overall assessed value of the real estate of the township has gone down from '24 to '25. You mentioned that expenses are outpacing revenues. So how is it that we're able to balance this budget this year with those factors, those headwinds running against us?
So with those unexpected receipts related to the earned income tax and the interest earnings, we were able to increase our fund balance numbers to a higher number than we expected. And then under that fund balance policy, we are then split across those percentages that were shown earlier. And of those percentages, there's just a piece there that we can use for the budget. It's up to 10% of what's left over in fund balance. However, as we keep using the fund balance, and if we don't enjoy another unexpected income source, that number will stabilize in.
So this is likely not sustainable into the future?
The revenues historically have remained relatively flat. Of course, they do increase a little based on a number of factors, but we anticipate the expenses to continue to outpace the revenues.
Thank you. Manager Manfredi.
Commissioner DePacito. Sorry, just had a quick question. So where does that leave the fund balance in '25 after the 6.5 mil and then the 1 mil that was shown earlier? Where would that leave that?
Unassigned fund balance or the capital?
The capital.
Capital, I think, was projected to be 2.8 from 6.7. So it's 6.7 at the beginning of the year?
I missed that number. All right.
So what I want to point out is, one of the charts that Ms. Herman showed you was the various sources of revenue. You saw the 1.4 million in interest earnings, earned income tax up, all of those. So those revenues being stronger than anticipated, that's what offset. And when you look at the budget message, it will show you the exact numbers as to why the expenses are, what they are, and how we arrived at balancing the budget with the 1.4 of this 1.221. Which, so that's why it's revenues plus fund equity that balances the budget with expenditures. And I've said this each year, and every year, we take great pains to make sure that every department and every director is watching their expenditures. As you know, we typically will put in a spending freeze every September or October so that we can assure that it doesn't outpace at the end of the quarter, that we don't start spending money just to spend the money, you know, that we hit our targets for the end of the year. Brought this back up because I think it's important. This practice and policy, you also saw on the chart for the levies, there's 0.33 that's levied for OPEB, Other Post-Employment Benefits. And you also see that there's the ability to use from that 12.2 million, 35 to 40% of revenue over expenses. So that's two different pools of money for that, which explains why we're at 112% funding of OPEB. This fund balance policy, without question, got us through COVID. That discipline to target three years that was set up by the finance committee years ago and commissioners at the time, has clearly been benefiting the township. However, the way things are changing in the financial markets and the way the economy is, inflation, there has to be some serious consideration of not abandoning this because it's been critical to our success, but tweaking it. And the other piece that, and I know that certain members of the board who in leadership that we've talked with, we're completing an evaluation of all financing opportunities to generate money for capital. That should be completed. You recall, I believe, we all spoke to that at some point in time and we waited until the appropriate time to do that. But that's going to look at our financial condition, our expenses, what we do, how we do it, and what are the other options for generating capital to fund capital into the future? If you go back to, before we go to the calendar, there's one other thing that Ms. Herman touched on, but I want to drive the point home because I know there's been a lot of discussion. And when we were, the, when we have been, as you know, this board has dedicated dollars for culture, parks, and recreation capital investment for some time. We have been diligent. I cannot tell you the amount of time that Jeanette and Ashley have spent working with the consultants and the auditors to make sure that every dollar we spend is in accordance with how it's supposed to be spent. The treasury being the treasury and the federal government being the federal government, we are always mindful that they may change their guidance, they may change their rules. And so we are constantly watching that and monitoring that to make sure that when the time comes for you to actually determine what you want to spend that money on in those areas, that you're able to do that. So as we continue to work through this, and as the ever-diligent Commissioner Vehi asks that we constantly pay attention to this, because of that concern, we don't want to see those dollars go away. You know, we have this in here, so please read this, please read the message, and you'll see exactly what the U.S. Department of Treasury clarifying language is as of March of '24. as of March of '24 that we're driving to as to why this $10 million is being handled the way it's being handled because this is what the Treasury is recommending. This is what is the most transparent and the cleanest. When we are looking at alternatives, we went to the Finance Committee to run by them. What do you think? And we had a lot of great questions. I remember Commissioner DePlacido, and I won't get into what it was, but he had asked one very pointed question, and it begs the question of, is this the best way to do this? Or is it better to approach it in 2025 rather than trying to adjust it in 2024? And that question gave us what we were looking for, as well as the other questions of the Finance Committee that said, no, the timing of going to the Finance Committee was related to this budget. And how do we approach this? And I can't thank the board and the Finance Committee for their time that you give all the time. You know, I know that the size of the budget that I introduced some years ago and it continues to grow is large. But if you take the time to read every page, you will not only see what we accomplished last year and what the plan is, but how it all ties together. And the time that, you know, I ask directors to put into their narratives and into their budgets. And they willingly do it because they care can't be lost. So I'm going to conclude with this final presentation of a budget to you with thank you. Thank you for helping us be where we are through your vision and your leadership in making sure that we can be in the financial condition we're in where we haven't raised taxes now for three years in a row. On the ARPA and on the others, just in terms of process and calendar, obviously, we will post, we'll make this live so people can go online and read every page and look at every detail. Any questions whatsoever, as Ms. Herman said, we have an email address that those questions can go to. You can schedule time to speak with her. There are weeks between now and the time we actually have the proposed budgeting you for a vote as proposed. And then, of course, there's that additional month. Once that is done, once you determine how you want to spend those dollars that are tied to ARPA, you've heard us talk about MOUs and agreements. All of those expenditures, that will come immediately after you determine this budget. So that obligation in writing on board actions is what will obligate the dollars to the projects you want and that will comply with the American Recovery Plan Act. And that is it. Thank you.
Thank you, Manager Manfredi. I think we should return the sentiment both to you and all the staff who are here this evening. We appreciate and respect the incredible hard work that goes into pulling off a budget like this. It's complicated. We've talked about all the prevailing factors. But we respect and admire the work that's gone into this over the years. And since you became manager, the processes that you've put into place to get us through this, to help us guide us through COVID, to get to a place, even in an environment where expenses are exceeding revenues, we found a way to not pass that on to the residents of this township for three years in a row. So hats off to you and your staff.
And thank you, and thank you to the team.
Yep. And then we'll open it up for public comment.
Manager Manfredi, real quick, to confirm, this presentation will be available on the website?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, okay.
We'll also have a printout. And we typically will put one to the library as well. So there will be a hard copy, but it will be available tomorrow.
Okay. And when will the preliminary budget be ready on open.gov?
The proposed, again, so that we can make sure it's not interrupted by other items, there's a proposed, the proposed budget meeting is scheduled for October 1 at 7:00 p.m. So on October 1 at 7:00 p.m., this budget, unless it gets changed by, you know, things that are asked of the commissioners and the public, we would expect it is as it is on October 1. It would be back in front of you to vote on as proposed. If you vote on it as it is, as proposed, it would then be available for another, more than one month, from October 1 to November 7, where you would actually vote to finalize the budget. It's normally done in December, but it'll be done in November this year to give more time, should you need it for any reason.
Thank you. Commissioner Bowman.
So just to clarify, for constituents who ask how we spent the ARPA money, we are paying regular budget items with it and that will free up money for us to devote in the '25 budget to various items that we find important, whether it be parks or whether the items we just heard. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. And we will open it up for public comment.
Mike Tobin, you're unmuted.
Yeah, hi. Couple of questions. I thought I saw on there where there was actually going to be a real small decrease in the amount of our taxes. Was that correct?
No. I'm not sure exactly what you're referencing, Mr. Tobin, but taxes are being held, taxes and the fees are being held at the rate that they were in fiscal '24.
Okay, the 5.8 mileage, how does that compare to our, I know as a county, we're fine, but how does that compare to our immediate neighbors, being Chautauqua and like Jenkentown and like Lower Moreland, or Upper Moreland, for example?
Well, what I can answer in the aggregate is that if you look at the 67 municipalities in Montgomery County, we are roughly either the 19th or 20th most expensive while being the second largest.
Okay. Okay. The police, the firing range, the gun range, what size, is that just strictly a gun range or is that going to be a whole training facility?
What we are proposing is to put a firing range, training range, at our current public safety training facility. It would be, it would be in addition to, in addition onto, one of the options is in addition onto the existing training facility.
Okay. Any idea of size? Just ballpark?
Yeah, ballpark size would be, some of the things we've mapped out is a 25-yard, four 25-yard lanes and four 50-yard lanes, which would be the minimum qualification for rifle and handgun by the municipal police officers' training standard.
Four, a 25-yard range is good for an AR?
No, the 50-yard range would be for the AR side.
50 yards, okay.
25 would be for handgun.
Okay, gotcha. Okay, and how, so how wide is each lane? Not the, I'm not looking at the time.
Yeah, I don't have the specifics mapped out yet. This was kind of just a rough plan that we drafted, something that would cover all of our qualifications.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tobin.
Laura Lehman, you're unmuted.
Laura Lehman Mettlerbrook. There are so many things here. So first of all, there is no excuse for us not having this. You put the stuff up on the screen that you're talking about and you clearly know that people can't read it on the screen and shouldn't be reading it while they're listening about it. They should have seen it before and only the things that are important that caught their attention. So it's a complete disservice to allow this not to be distributed to us in advance. And then, you know, also, the, using the channel, I want to mention that very quickly, that we have a deep history of using the channel to promote commissioners. And so I hope they will be very, that Ms. Fitzgerald will be very careful about how that is done because that is political. The, we thanked you for starting this in September, but in fact, the fact exists that you moved it up a month. So you didn't start it any earlier so that we have any advantage at all. And we've already told you that clearly our comments don't mean anything. And Mr. Manfredi thinks that leaving it open for 30 days where we can comment directly to him is the same as public comment, and it's not. We need public comment that others can hear what we have to say and we can hear what they have to say. That's how all of us work together. So the fact that the township line flattened out, it flattened out for a reason while the school line went up. And one of the reasons is that we had the highest tax rate that we have ever had in this township. We have never, in the three years together, it was 39%. We've never had a tax rate. They freaked out over a 5% tax hike. And Mr. Manfredi saw, and Mr. Hecker, you saw that you were going to get away with a tax hike, a first of the 9%. Then you were going to add the 20, which turned into 27%. So it's unbelievable. And that's with the inclusion of $19 million from COVID, when all we were down in the first year we got that was $5,000. So, I'm sorry, $5 million, not 5,000. So if you actually have the police power, we talked about Lower Marion and Upper Marion having more police officers, 2.13. I would ask our police force to consider that the reason that they're getting so many fewer calls than Abington is fielding is because they put more police officers out to take care of the business of what their residents needed. I actually called and asked their communications person for the name of the person patrolling our area. And she said, and I quote, "Put in a right to know." I thought that was unbelievable. And in my neighborhood, by the way, we did have the Asian crime happening. And all of us should have been alerted. Not only were we not all alerted, but we had residents that lived right next door to the crime that were never asked if they'd even seen anything. So we absolutely need to find out what's going on that's wrong. And I'm concerned that we have a public affairs director, and I welcome Liz Fitzgerald. I think she's wonderful and doing great things with the library and has lots of wonderful plans. But there's a different kind of public affairs director that we need. And that is the one to handle the problems that residents have. They get shut out and turned off. And for all of you, and it's not just Commissioner Hecker, it's not just Mr. Manfredi, it's not just Dennis Sapon, who doesn't know what he's talking about when he defames you and intimidates you not to report corruption. I actually need all of you to understand that residents are in danger in this township and being ignored. And that we need to have somebody in public affairs that cares about that, but all of you sitting there on the dais, including Mr. Manfredi, Lauren Gallagher, and everyone involved in this township.
Ms. Lehman, please conclude your comments. Your time has expired.
Need to care about what that is. And I just want to say, you know, to congratulate yourselves on a budget that you've just set is unsustainable? That's unsustainable to me. Thank you.
Yeah, okay. With that, oh, I'm sorry. I didn't, come on up. I thought you were here just for purely intellectual interest.
Sorry. So I'm Karen McGarry Rosen. I'm the chair of the Environmental Advisory Council. I just want to express, on behalf of the EAC, the, hopefully, that you will support our budget requests, the two budget requests that we submitted with the Shiitri Commission, one of which is to maintain and expand the native plant gardens at Roslyn Park. In addition to the second piece, which is the hiring of someone to create a township-wide invasive plant management plan. So this is something that was identified as far as the comprehensive recreation and open space park committee plan. It's mentioned in there. I was a committee member on that committee. The last thing is I want to express support for the budget request from Public Works for the truck wash. As you know, as he already explained, I'm not going to go into it again, but that salt content in Bader Creek is a huge problem. And having those trucks washed, the undercarriage, will prevent the salt from being attached to the trucks, having rained, and then coming back into the creek. I guess the other thing I noticed on the website, if I can say, that this meeting, you can't request an agenda to be emailed to you when it's posted. So on the website for the agenda, you have an option to submit your email and then when the agenda is posted on the website, you get a notification.
Yes.
So this particular meeting is not available. So what is available is the Board of Commissioners Committee of the whole, which that doesn't exist.
That doesn't exist anymore.
Yeah. Also, there are other committees on this list that are not currently active. So I just encourage.
We'll clean that up.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. And if you can find a way to eradicate porcelain berry from the township, we'll fund it.
Porcelain, what is?
That's one of the most invasive species that we have.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we are adjourned.